Good morning, everybody. I'd like to start off by having Supervisor Steve Chukri say a couple things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. I apologize for being a few minutes late, but we're here today with Deacon James Trant. Deacon, thank you for coming this morning and encouraging us. You were with the Diocese of Phoenix, and we're lucky to have you as part of the Catholic community here in Phoenix. So with that, I'll turn it over to Deacon Trant.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board of supervisors and guests, thank you for this opportunity. Now, please let us place ourselves in the presence of God. Almighty, merciful, and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all of us gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, from conception to natural birth, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and friends. Thank you for the ability to be involved in your work, for the honor of carrying out our responsibilities of elected officials. Thank you for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In Scripture, you have said that citizens should obey governing authorities, since you have established those with authority, to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for your blessing upon our chairman, for the various levels of county officials, and especially for this assembled council of supervisors. I ask that you graciously grant them the wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness. Grant them confidence in what is good and what is your will. Grant them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. Grant them peace in their lives, their families, and joy in fulfilling the tasks you have given to them. I pray for the agenda set for them today. Please give us all an understanding of what would please you and what would benefit the citizens of Maricopa County and all those living and working in our beloved communities. Continue to remind us that all that we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of God, and for the service of humanity. We ask all of this in Jesus' most holy name. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. God bless.
Thank you, Deacon, for being with us today. Thank you for the prayer. All right. Ms. Fran McCarroll, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Gates.
Here.
Supervisor Chukri.
Here.
Supervisor Sellers.
Here.
Supervisor Gallardo.
Here.
And Chairman Hickman.
Here. Thank you, Fran. Okay, for the first time, John Reynolds is here from Animal Care and Control. Well, kind of, playing solo for the first time.
Chairman Hickman, supervisors, thank you for having me in this morning. This little guy is about a two-month-old puppy. He's already been neutered. We think he's a terrier mix. He's very cute. He actually came in with nine other siblings. And he's got a little bit of an interesting story. A gentleman in our area, in the area of the shelter, was taking care of his elderly parents and their pets. They had six adult dogs, and they also ended up with 10 puppies. Knowing that this was way too much for him to handle on his own, he called our pet helpline. And I know you're all familiar with Starla. Starla went out, helped him out. We managed to get the puppies. He agreed to give up all of the puppies, put them up for adoption, along with some of the adult dogs. The adult dogs that he is keeping, he did agree to have spayed and neutered. So we're having those altered, and we're going to get those back to him. So it's just, this little guy, along with his nine siblings, are just one of the examples of how our pet help program is helping our community. And he actually was supposed to have a brother come with him, but late yesterday afternoon, about 5:00, somebody drove all the way from Tucson just to adopt one of the puppies. So he is actually the last of the litter of 10. He will be for adoption at 11:00 today.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
He had, he got a good gig, then.
He did.
To be exposed to everybody. Anyone? Bids? All right. Fran, are there any announcements or corrections to the agenda today?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, on page 15 of your agenda, item number nine, when you get there, there will be a request to continue that item to the March 11th meeting. You will need to take a vote to continue the item as it falls under Transportation's public hearings.
Okay, great. I'll hope one of my colleagues makes note of that. So, next on the agenda is Presentations. Number five is a proclamation for celebrating League of Women Voters' 100th anniversary. Ms. McCarroll, will you please read the proclamation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. "Celebrating League of Women Voters' 100th Anniversary. Whereas the League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 as a mighty political experiment by the four mothers of the suffragettes movement at the National American Women Suffrage Association, and whereas the League's goal was to help the 20 million women who were granted the right to vote by the 19th Amendment to the Constitution understand and carry out their new responsibilities as voters. And whereas, due to the League's successful efforts over the last 100 years to uphold its mission to empower voters and defend democracy, the League has become a trusted, nonpartisan, grassroots organization. And whereas the League has sponsored legislation and fought to protect and strengthen voting rights and access, as well as free and fair elections. And whereas the League has consistently been noted for nonpartisan election information, sponsorship of candidate forums, and their commitment to register, educate, and mobilize voters. And whereas the League believes that active and engaged citizens, irrespective of gender, ethnicity, or political affiliation, are the hallmark of democracy, now therefore be it resolved that the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim February 14th as League of Women Voters' Day and congratulates the League on its 100th anniversary."
Very good. So the board will now consider item number five, and I think some ladies would like to speak to us also, but should we have the vote first?
Thank you.
Okay. Item number five. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
A motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. So now, Ms. Judy Moore, Martha Thompson, and Susan Penner from the League of Women's Voters are here today, along with other members from the Northwest Maricopa County and Metro Phoenix League locations. I'm going to ask Susan Penner and Martha Thompson to come up. You don't want to talk. You know what? You made me come out and talk to you guys. And you asked for a proclamation. Martha, I'm going to give you two minutes. No, uh, we're going to practice our speaking skills today. No?
Susan is.
Would you guys like to say something, Susan? Great. Martha. Thank you, Susan, for being here.
Thank you. Chairman Hickman, supervisors and friends, I thank all of you on behalf of my fellow Leaguers for the honor of your proclamation celebrating our 100th anniversary. You have to excuse me, I'm not used to speaking, because I'm part of the observer corps of the League, and we are just to do that when we come to meetings, observe. Okay? So excuse me if I'm a little nervous. I'd like, and Fran did a wonderful job explaining about our positions, so I'm going to skip that, and just let you know that the League of Women Voters of Arizona has six local leagues: Metro Phoenix, Northwest Maricopa County, Tucson, Verde Valley, Central DeAva Pi County, and our newest is up in Flagstaff. I would like to share a few of our accomplishments here in Arizona. These are the things that we are responsible for helping come to fruition: merit selection and retention of judges, and judicial performance review standards, the Clean Elections Act, independent redistricting commission, which is now a model for our nation. Most recently, our successful litigation now allows, for the first time, voter registration and change of address services online at the motor vehicles department. Voter education. We have published balanced pro and con voter guides, registered thousands of voters, and provided them with nonpartisan factual information so they can make informed voting decisions. One little-known fact at the League in our area is that we helped save the Orpheum Theater. In closing, I'd like to acknowledge these women: Bonnie Saunders, who is interim president of the Arizona League and a member of Northwest Maricopa County; she is also a 50-year member of the League; Judy Moore, our president of Northwest Maricopa County; Linda Holman Bentley, president of Metro Phoenix; Rivco Knox, Metro Phoenix, a volunteer lobbyist at the Capitol, quoted often on KJAS, Horizon, and the Republic; you can't miss her with her Vote shirt. Rivco is also a 50-year member of the League; Lila Swartz, Marge Mead, and Carol Mattoon, Northwest Maricopa County, who are instrumental in passing clean elections; Michelle Dorsey, Metro Phoenix, who is a representative to the United Nations; Skeet Blakesley, Metro Phoenix, who was a force of nature while she was alive, with accomplishments too numerous to mention. So, gentlemen and ladies, you can see we're not just a bunch of pretty faces. A special shout-out to Fran and Valerie Beckett for guiding me through that which is the Board of Supervisors. One other thing I'd like to recommend that people do is get a DVD called Iron-Jawed Angels. It's pretty recent, and it tells the story of the fight for the right to vote. Right, thank you.
Fabulous. Thanks for coming. Susan, you did great. Now you see what we have to deal with every other couple weeks with public speaking. Supervisor Gallardo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to you. You extended an invitation to come out and speak to the group. Unfortunately, I had a conflict.
I ate your lunch.
Did you really? Okay, yeah. I hope you enjoyed it. But I do want to thank the League for all the work that they do. You know, I saw it when I was employee at Maricopa County Elections Department, and they were always engaged in helping the Elections Department. I saw their activity at the State Capitol when I was a legislator. They were always there, educating us lawmakers on many different policies, particularly when it came down to mostly election-related, let it be independent redistricting and clean elections, all that stuff. And they continue to be out there in the community, just doing some great work and making sure that everyone's right to vote is protected. It's the most fundamental right we have, and this League just continues. These ladies don't give up. They're always on the go. They're always, throughout the county and the state, doing some great work. So I just want to thank you all. They do it, and it's a nonpartisan organization, and it's just all about everyone having that right to vote and protecting it. So thank you so much for what you all do.
Awesome. Thank you, Steve. Phil.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Echo your comments and those of Supervisor Gallardo. Thanks to the League of Women Voters for your leadership over the years. This is really excited to celebrate this occasion, and actually, we'll be relying upon you all to help educate folks about the changes that are coming in elections this year. I'm sure Phil the Ballot, who's our mascot, to talk about the changes in elections, will be happy to come out with you guys, but you know, it's very important that people understand these changes. They're not surprised by what goes on in the three big elections coming up, so we appreciate your partnership on that. And finally, having one of the newest women voters in Maricopa County, my daughter, who's 18 and recently registered to vote, I'm especially grateful for what you all do. So thanks for being here.
That's, that's great. Well, we're going to ask you guys to come up and take a picture with us, and I would just like, you've been observing us for the past year and seeing what we do here, so now you can go out and say why Maricopa County is the best brand of government, at least in this state. I think nationwide, but we'll just hold it to this state. So if you guys would like to join me and my board for a picture? Thanks again, ladies, for making the drive down here. We appreciate it. Okay, we are going to now go to our planning and zoning, part of the agenda. We will now consider the planning and zoning portion of our agenda. Fran, is there anyone present to comment on items PZ1 through PZ5?
Mr. Chairman, I only have one speaker slip. Jessica Sarkinson is here in favor of item number two, does not wish to speak.
Great, that looks like that's in my district, too. So good. Thank you very much. Okay, hearing that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, since my other colleagues are still asleep, I am going to make the motion on one of the items that's pertaining to Goodyear. I went and toured that. I think the gentlemen are here. Yeah, I see them. You know, questionable representation in your zoning attorney, but other than that, it's actually, and I know this is not my district, Mr. Chairman, but a very impressive project.
Yeah.
And you want to talk about vision and insight and forward-thinking, I think it's all encapsulated in that one development. So I applaud them. And of course, Mr. Ed Bull is one of the best zoning attorneys, so I was kidding about that, but congratulations to them. So I do make a motion to approve all those items.
And thank you, because it's in my district. That's fantastic. I've taken a tour of it, too, that you guys were gracious enough to let me know what was going on out there. So thank you, guys, for being here. Well, we have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Great. Next up, we will call up Jen Pokorski and Darren Gerard of the PNZ. On the planning and zoning on our regular agenda is PZ6, Anchor Point Welding. Fran, is there anyone present to comment on item PZ6?
Mr. Chairman, I do have several speaker slips. I'm wondering if Ms. Pokorski would like to do an intro before we...
Oh, I never get that right. Yes, if you could explain what is going on on item PZ6. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. Anchor Point Welding is a special use permit to allow home-based business in a rural zoning district. It's about a quarter mile north of Carefree Highway on 10th Street in the New River area. This case was continued from the January 29th board meeting to allow the applicant additional time to work with the neighbors to resolve some of the concerns. Some of the concerns that we had heard from the neighbors was regarding noise and dust and the intensity of this use in the residential area. To mitigate the neighbors' concerns, all welding and use of any power tools will take place inside of a building that will be built on-site. There is also an eight-foot block wall that will be constructed along the west side of the property to block any view of the business or any storage related to the business. I'd like to point out that there has been some concerns raised regarding the building that will be constructed on-site. That building is, and the dimensions of the building, the height of the building, is allowed by right in this zoning district. So you are not approving the construction of this building, you are approving what's before you, is approval of the special use permit for the use. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. We've received 30 letters of support and 16 letters of opposition as of today, and including several from the surrounding property owners, which you can see on the map up on the screen, so it does trigger a supermajority vote. There is one change to a stipulation on the case that I would like to read into the record, and that is stipulation D. So the motion for board approval, if it would be approved, would be, including stipulation D, "The special use permit shall expire 10 years from the date of approval by the Board of Supervisors or upon termination of the use." of Supervisors or upon termination of the use, whichever occurs first. All the site improvements shall be removed within 60 days of such termination or expiration." Happy to answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any que-- no questions yet. Speakers. Okay.
These are in favor, speak. Opposed, three of them, and they all wish to speak.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead, and I'll start off in order that these have been given to me. Ms. Janet Salazar, if you would like to, says you would like to speak in favor.
Good morning. I'm Janet Salazar. I'm here to support John Teal, Anchor Port Welding. I share a south property line with John. He's been a great neighbor since he's been there. There's been no dust, been no noise. He has improved on the, when you drive by it, the curb appeal. He's been called on several times to help, like, you know, find the lost dog that got out, or do some small welding, and he's been more than happy to help. So he's been there when we needed him, and he hasn't been a problem for the community at all.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you, Ms. Salazar. Thank you for joining us today.
Mr. Chair, just had a question for Ms. Salazar.
Yes.
Ms. Salazar, thanks for joining us. Can you point out on the map which parcel is yours?
Let's see. Which one is John's? I don't know.
John's is in blue.
Blue. So he is, I'm just north of him. I share a south property line with him and Jeff Coslow.
Okay.
So is yours, like, yellow?
It's the green.
Is it green?
I'm not sure.
Green at the top.
The green, okay.
Green in the middle, I guess, middle top.
It's the green, okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next wanting to speak in favor is, oh, man. Is it Hans? Oh, there it is. Hans Thiel? Hans Thiel? Okay. Okay. Thank you for joining us today, Mr. Thiel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. I am the trustee of the trust that owns the property, and I've watched this process, and I've noted that a number of lies have been told about my son and his activities. I would say this to you: If people can come here and lie without abandon and not have any consequences, how can you make good decisions? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for joining us today. Next up will be Mr. Thomas Boyd, or is it Baird?
Baird.
Baird.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you, Council, for having me and listening. I'm a property corner from him.
Okay.
It's kind of hard to see. I'm in the wash, basically.
Okay.
So we always have this thing about dust that has been mentioned. There is really no paved road there, so no matter who goes up and down that road all day long, there's dust. My wife worked down here for 29 years in the adult probation department and retired recently, and she had a place over in Paradise Valley, which she was more willing to give up when I bought that property six years ago for the ruralness of it. Now, she does mention that there's no chance of having a pool out there probably without a cover because of the dust, long before Jonathan bought that property. So the dust thing, that's going to continue going on as long as the wind blows. That where in the desert? It's a rural property, not residential, once again. The property that Jonathan owns that he's working on, there's already a six-foot block fence pretty much around the whole thing, so really, the fencing isn't going to change much. And once again, noting that we are in a wash, there's a water that runs through there every time it rains, water puddles, stands. So somebody's going to say, oh, there's going to be mosquitoes if he builds a bigger fence. Come on now. There's going to be mosquitoes no matter what. We're in a wash. The water stands. Unless you guys can do something about that, I don't see how that's going to ever change, no matter what he builds up there. I leave that property early in the morning. I don't hear no noise. I don't see no dust. But my wife, now that she's retired, she is very nosy. She likes to walk the dog a lot and talk to a lot of the neighbors.
This is being filmed?
I hope so. Well, she had a prior engagement, or she'd be here saying it herself. So she talks to a lot of the neighbors, and almost everybody she's talked to, and some of them that'll say they weren't for it, well, somebody in their family obviously is because she walked the dog up to the fence and talked to them when their dogs were sniffing each other, and they didn't seem to have a problem with it, but they might today say they do, but I don't understand why, if you've been in the neighborhood and you looked at the properties around there. This isn't changing the value of the properties at all. If anything, it drives the property up, because that's why people want to move out there and buy the property. They want a bigger piece of property with a workshop. That's what brought me out there, was my nice big garage in the back and a workshop. So just, you know, to cover all the bases, a lot of this, what he's doing isn't going to change a thing as far as the community. If it does anything, it's going to bring up the value, not down the value. The dust is never going to change. Wind's going to blow. We got a fact. We're in a wash. Mosquito factor, it's not going to change. There's horses, there's rodeos going on out there all the time. That's a rural area, so the small amount of business that he does out of that isn't going to make a difference to any of us in the long run. It ain't going to change a view from out there, whether he can already build a building. I know there's some, maybe one person that was angry about the size of the building, but he can build that anyway as a hobby shop. He could build that building and do the same thing as a hobby shop. But that's my opinion on it. Hopefully, the Council will see fit and judge wisely. I think the majority of the people are for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baird. Thanks for joining us. Ms. Joanie Gates. He tends to do that.
I don't know. Can't tell. I'm two houses away from him.
Okay.
My property doesn't, oh, thank you for having me.
Okay.
My property doesn't line up with his, but I'm two houses away, and I've been out there for 20 years, and I've seen this area grow. We, like they said, we moved out here to have the bigger properties, to have the horses, to have the shops, to have our even small businesses that we do, and don't put an LLC behind our names or whatever. But John's property's got the cleanest property. If anything, the value of our properties have gone up because his property is gorgeous, he keeps it clean. You wouldn't know that he's even conducting a business on the property. Like, the dust is the dust. We live on rural roads. The only devalue that I can see coming up 10th Street, there's houses with junkyards that are eyesores that would bring our property values down. There's people that run auto shops that bring our property value down. His property is one of the immaculate ones. I don't know if you've seen a better view than a drawing, but it's crazy. I don't know what the deterrence is of bringing him down, of doing his business. You don't hear him. You don't see him do his business. I mean, he's, and the fence is fine. I don't know why we have to make it higher. I don't, it's not going to conduct any vision. You can't see anything anyway. It's a nice house of property, just like all of ours that are here, you know, in favor of him. So I'm in favor of him to continue on with what he's doing. I don't see what the problem is, so, thanks.
Thank you for joining us today. Also in favor, and we'll speak if necessary here, if you want to raise your hand, Mr. Michael Rowland. Okay, Michael, thanks for being here today. And Ms. Gail Thiel, also, if necessary. So we'll move on now to those who have filed to speak in opposition. We have Mr., I believe, Ron Reynolds. Did I get that right? Is it Ron? Okay.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Good morning.
So I'm Ron Reynolds. I'm part of the property owners of the land to the south of the applicant, in red, and we did meet after the last council session and to address a couple of the issues, our concerns. We talked about the block wall on the south that they're going to install, and they agreed to move it back afoot. We talked about their intention basis. Is that going to be mosquito breeding ground? You know, during monsoons, that water's going to set on top of that soil because of the cliche. It's not like a wash is going to naturally run off. So I did not get a response on that. They did talk about painting the building to make it look better. But, excuse me, according to this, stuff that was right to my attention, you're going to have that building 12 feet away from somebody's property line insulated, and there's not going to be any fire protection in there. How are they going to mitigate the unpreventable fire or unforeseen fire? So that's a question I had. But also, one of the things that got to me was the allegations of the last meeting. I did not appreciate somebody coming here saying that the applicant had made threats of my family. So with that being said, I'm still in opposition of it because Mr. Thiel has not proved his good intentions to me.
Okay. Thanks for being here. Mr. Gates.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for coming. I actually had a question for staff on the issue with respect to fire safety. You'd like to address that?
Chairman, Supervisor Gates, the building will have to meet all building codes, and if it's within a certain distance, I believe it's within five feet from the property line, it has to have a certain fire retardation on the building. But if it's 12 feet away, it should be meeting the building code and be safe for fire.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'm a little bit confused on this one. Ms. Jeanette Reynolds marked two boxes, to speak in opposition only if necessary, but well, it looks, okay, you'd like to speak. Great. Thanks for being here today.
I'm Jeanette Reynolds. I own the bottom two parcels there that are in kind of a maroon. The parcel right adjacent to Mr. Thiel's is also in my family trust, but it belongs to my three children. I want to thank the board for taking the time to listen to my concerns. They're very serious to me. First thing, which was something I didn't plan on addressing, was something was brought up here. The road is actually paved up past Mr. Thiel's property, so it is not a dust road at that point. I purchased this property, my husband and I, back in the '70s because we wanted a rural lifestyle. We wanted a quiet residential area, which it has been. Upon our divorce, I scraped and struggled to keep this property. Mr. Thiel bought his just a couple of years ago. He bought it to operate a business. I bought mine to live in a residential area. He, in the past, hasn't shown me that he has any regards for the neighborhood. The couple of years that he operated, we did have to put up with lots of noise at all hours of the days and the week, and the weekends. I don't have air conditioning, so in the summertime, I have to have my windows open so that I can have airflow. I couldn't sleep in the mornings or go to sleep in the evenings at a decent time because of the noise generated, pneumatic tools, grinding, banging, loud noise. If nobody else can hear it, I apologize, but I could and had to exist with it. Lately, I will admit, the amount of activities gone has decreased. There hasn't been as much activity. But once this process is through, he's granted the use permit, we have no guarantee that he will retain that level of consideration he's showing right now. We had a Realtor broker analyze the pictures, the area, what was going on. Her name is Sharon Fix, F-I-X-X, and in her opinion, the issuance of this special use permit allowing this, what would be an industrial use to go through, would adversely affect our property values. Safety concerns, I'm the lucky person that the alleged threats have been made against. They were not said to me, so I was not aware of them till recently. Had four different people talk to Mr. Coslow about this, including myself. Each time, he has said the same recollection of the conversation he had with Mr. Thiel. I wasn't there. I can't say whether or not this really happened, but I can say I have to take it seriously. As a former government employee, a coworker and myself were put in a position where we had safety threats made against us. Because of that, we went in front of the state legislature and got them to put everybody in our job position into a category to where all our records were sealed, so we were protected. For years, I had to work and watch over my shoulder, shopping anywhere I went, in case this person came after me. Now, in the last years of my life, when I should be able to enjoy my hobbies and my property, I have to be looking over my shoulders again. I have to be watching when I go shopping in my own neighborhood. I don't know if these allegations are true, but in this day and age, you can't dismiss them. You have to be careful. As far as being a good neighbor, I've had minimal interaction with Mr. Thiel. But I will say, and it may be coincidental, it may be retaliation, but while my ex-husband was in the hospital fighting for his life, I was out there in March of last year, cutting weeds with a regular lawnmower. Every neighbor saw me. And since I have lived out there, my weeds have always been taken down flat, always. But right after I talked to the legal assistant from John Thiel's lawyer's office, I got turned into the county for having excessive weeds while I was in the process of cutting them down. Again, it may be coincidental, but it sure feels like retaliation. Primarily, that's my major concerns. I don't think that this is a good thing for our neighborhood. I think it's dividing our neighborhood, and it's causing a lot of hard feelings. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us today. So the next up, and this is the last speaker slip I have, is Ms. Denise Griffin.
As needed, please, sir.
As needed, okay. Well, that's kind of up to you at this point, so, okay. Very good. Supervisor Gates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd actually like to ask Mr. Rowland and his client if you could come up. Got a couple of questions for you. So has been mentioned, this is the second time that you're all in front of us, and at the last meeting, and I thank everyone for coming down both at that meeting and this one, but at the last one, I asked you all to sit with the Reynolds and have a discussion, and it sounds like you did get together, so I'm appreciative of that. There is this allegation of you threatening them. I asked you, you came in earlier this week, I asked you if you had threatened them, and what was the answer you gave me?
Absolutely not. In fact, at the last hearing, Jeff Coslow said that I went to Jeanette's house drunk one night, went onto her property, and threatened to kill her, and John, she doesn't live with a John, she lives with a Lee, removed me from the property. If that had happened, somebody would have called the police, a report would have been made, or a restraining order would have been levied against me. None of that was done. Ron, her son, was here last time. He heard that claim, and he didn't corroborate it while he was here.
Okay, and I appreciate, the main thing was I wanted to hear whether you had threatened her.
Absolutely not.
Having said that, you know, Ms. Reynolds, if you, you should not feel unsafe in your neighborhood. That's unacceptable. So if you have any concerns, you feel free to contact our office. You contact the sheriff's office. That's very, very important. That's our responsibility in your area to make sure that you feel safe. So I want you to know that, that you're heard. He's told me that he didn't do it. Again, we're not, that's not what we're here to debate, but I want you to know that I got him on the record and said he's not going to do it. got him on the record and said he's not going to do it, so you should not anticipate that sort of conduct in the neighborhood. Okay, so we've got that, we've got that taken care of. And then the other thing I'll say is, you all are neighbors, you're going to continue to be neighbors, and I certainly hope, it's good to hear that you all got together and talked, and I would encourage that, to work together, to talk together, to be good neighbors, because it does make life very difficult when you're having disputes with your neighbors. Now, getting to the yes, Mr. Rowland?
I just want to make, thank you for your comments, and I want to add one other thing. Threats are very serious, and we're very disappointed that this has sort of disrupted this process, and we have tried to get together with Mr. Coslow and sort out whatever misunderstanding caused him to think that or say that. We don't know where it came from. But I do want to point out that one of the folks he accused John of threatening is Janet Salazar, who's here today in support of John. She previously had written a letter saying, John's never threatened me, he's a great addition to the neighborhood, and if you ask her about that here today, I'm sure she'll say the same thing. So to the extent that that makes Mrs. Reynolds feel more comfortable that these allegations are false, I just wanted to make sure that was brought up, and I have mentioned that to her before. I understand that threats are a scary thing, and we just want to do everything we can to assure her that those threats are not, never happened, and that John would not take any sort of unlawful action like that.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I just want to confirm a few things. So first of all, you are agreeing, and one of the stipulations of this case, that you will only be doing, first of all, the work's going to be done in a building, right?
Correct.
Okay. And secondly, it will be 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, five days a week?
I think it was nine, nine to five.
Even better.
Even better.
Great. 9:00 AM to 5:00, nothing on the weekends, right?
Correct.
Okay. And there, and the walls are being extended to eight feet? They're being raised to eight feet?
That's right.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that. I appreciate your willingness to make these changes, and also pleased to hear that you've agreed to put new coating on the building and other issues that were raised by Mr. Reynolds. Given that situation, and given the fact that you do have the ability, as of right, to do the 30-foot building anyway, and the issue is whether the home business is going to be allowed, given these particular stipulations, I'm comfortable with this. Again, I thank you for coming down, getting involved, exercising your rights, and I think getting some concessions from your neighbor. I would move to approve PZ-6 with the revision to Stipulation D that was mentioned earlier.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck to all of you. We will now move on to the statutory hearings portion, under Clerk of the Board. Item number six is a liquor license and applications. Item A, sampling privileges for Skyline Liquor. B, new license for Nino's Mexican Restaurant. C, permanent extension of premises patio for Tonto Verde Golf Club. D through E is a special event license for the Adelante Foundation, the Wisconsin Club of Sun City, and bingo license application for Lost Dutchman Social Club. Fran, is there anyone present to comment on items 6A through E and item seven?
I have no speaker slips, Mr. Chairman.
The board will now consider items 6A through E and seven.
Move for approval? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. On the agenda, item eight has been withdrawn. We'll now move on to item nine, under Transportation. Okay, this item, the department has requested to continue this item to the March 11th meeting. The board will now consider a motion to continue item nine, which is a patent easement/abandonment.
Mr. Chair, motion to continue this item until March 11th?
March 11th? Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under County Officers, under Clerk of the Court, number 10, appointments. Under County Attorney, number 11, grant from Arizona Criminal Justice Commission. The board will now consider items 10 and 11.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 10 and 11.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo.
Second.
No motion. Thank you, Jack. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under the Sheriff, number 12, donation, number 13 through 14, IGAs with the Arizona Department of Agriculture and the City of Phoenix. Under the Treasurer, number 15, tax abatements. The board will now consider items 12 through 15.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Supervisor Chukri?
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gates. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Still, under County Offices and Departments, Animal Care and Control, 16, Budget Adjustment, 17, New Hope Agreement with Big Bully Rescue, Inc., number 18, Kennel Permit Renewal. Under Emergency Management, 19 through 20, our grant funds from Arizona State Department of Homeland Security. Under Finance, number 21, Funds Transfers and Warrants, the board will now consider items 16 through 21.
Motion to approve items 16 through 21.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Human Services, 22, Revisions to Agreement with Arizona Department of Education Child Nutrition Programs. 23 through 26, Amended IGAs or Agreements with Arizona Department of Economic Security, Wildfire, Town of Guadalupe. Medical Examiner, 27, Agreement with AT Still, University of Health Sciences. Under Procurement, 28, Renovation of Central Court's 13th Floor. 29 is the Electrical Job Order Contractor. The board will now consider items 22 through 29.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items 22 through 29.
Thank you, Supervisor Gallardo.
Second.
Second, thank you, Jack. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Public Defense, 30, Funds from the Department of Health and Human Services, under Public Health. 31, Purchase Orders to IGA with Arizona Department of Health Services. 32, Agreement with Neighborhood Outreach Access to Health. 33 through 35, amended Contract and Agreements with the Arizona Department of Health Services, KEO Health Connection, Empowerment Systems, Inc. And number 36 is a Notice of Award for Arizona State University Knowledge Exchange. The board will now consider items 30 through 36.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri?
Second.
And a second, thank you, Bill. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Transportation, 37 through 39, Annexations by the Town of Queen Creek, City of Avondale, City of Phoenix. Number 40, Bid and Award for Roadway Rehabilitation Project. Number 41, One-Time Appropriation for Sun Lake's Dust Mitigation Pilot Program. Number 42, Median Parking Lot Restrictions. And number 43, Easement and Right-of-Way and Relocation Assistance Documents. Board will now consider items 37 through 43.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items 37 through 43 with a comment on item 41. Item 41 is resolving a complaint issue that we've had in Sun Lakes for many years, and I particularly want to thank Jennifer Toth and Representative Jeff Winniger for all of their help in getting this problem resolved.
Great, thank you, Jack. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. And on, specifically on item number 42 as well, I'd like to thank McDot for their quick work on this item, and I'd also like to pre-thank the Maricopa County Sheriff's Officers for the enforcement of what is occurring in item number 42, so I thank them. Under Board of Supervisors, number 44, Reappointment of Annie Foster Travel Reduction Program Regional Task Force. Number 45 and 46, Appointments of Alina Garcia, Designated Principal of the Office of the Public Fiduciary, and our own LeAnn Bone as Self-Inured Risk Trust Fund Board of Trustees. The board will now consider items 44 through 46.
Motion to approve items 44 through 46.
I have a motion. Thank you, Bill. I have a second.
Second.
I'm going to go with the vice chair.
I lost.
So I have a motion and a second, unless LeAnn Bone wants to come and give a speech about, okay.
We've got plenty of time, Mr. Chairman.
She has turned down the opportunity, let the record state. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under Setting of Hearings, Planning, and Development, number 47, Planning and Zoning Hearings. Under Transportation, item 48 through 61, Road Files, and 62 through 65, Patent Easement Abandonment. The board will now consider items 47 through 65.
Move for approval? Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. At this point, I get to see my vice chair in action. I need to recuse myself from item number 66.
You're on, Jack.
All right. Okay, is it time for a coup?
Let them get outside the door first.
So move, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, on item 66, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 66, Secured and Unsecured Tax Rule Corrections.
Motion to approve item 66.
Second.
Thank you, Supervisor Gates, and thank you, Supervisor Chukri. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome back. I am now chair.
Go back to the egg farm. That's great. Thank you, Jack. Still, under Consent Agenda, number 67, Treasures, Collections, and Investment Summary for December 2019. Number 68, Head Start Report. Number 69, Duplicate Warrants. Number 70, Donations. The board will now consider items 67 through 70.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Supervisor Chukri.
Second.
Thank you, Bill. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Under the Addendum, A1, under Board of Supervisors, Rico Expenditure Application. Number A2, Consideration of Appointment of Maricopa County Assessor. Number A3, under County Attorney, filing a motion to intervene in Democratic National Committee versus Hobbs et al. Under Transportation, A4, Settlement and Dirt 101 Investment LLC. The board will now consider items A1 through A4, but you might, do I need to, do I need to make an exception on A3 because there'll be?
A2.
I'm sorry.
A2 was the, we're still thinking.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I spun right past that. Yeah, so anyone want to comment on A2?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not too sure what motion you made for A2, but for item A3, I was hoping to be able to take that separately.
Okay, so we'll take that one separately.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'd make a motion to approve A1 and A4.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on A1 and A4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Regarding A3, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve.
Second? With a comment?
Are you talking to A3 or A2?
A3. Sorry, I haven't gone back. I'll go back up to A2.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment.
You'd like to, okay.
I'd like some clarification on this item. My understanding is that this item will allow the county attorney to file a motion to intervene regarding the court's ruling on the out-of-precinct question only. If that is correct, then I would vote to approve this.
Okay.
Comments? I'm not seeing anyone from the county attorney's office here, but that's certainly my understanding. That's, that will be the basis upon which I'm supporting this motion as well. The Attorney General has already appealed this with respect to the ballot harvesting issue, but I think that it's very important that Maricopa County intervene with respect to the out-of-precinct issues. And without getting too much into the details of this, we need to get involved because it could have a major impact if this ruling is allowed to stand. It will have a major impact on how we run the elections here in 2020, and it's very important that these elections are done successfully and that we can do it within the budget that has been set forth by this board. So given those interests, I think it's very important that this, that Maricopa County does intervene with respect to the out-of-precinct issue only.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, as it relates to A2, Madam Clerk, I know that we put this on here in the hopes of having an idea of an appointed assessor, but since we do not, would it be best to continue this to a date certain or just continue it?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Chukri, I think we just, at this point, need to say it will be continued until reposted, and then when we have a posting, we will know that would be the date, but I don't think we have a certain at this point.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. To that end, Mr. Chairman, I will move to continue this item to the next posting of this subject matter.
Great. I have a motion. Thank you, Supervisor Chukri. I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any, excuse me, any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now recess as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Flood Control District Board of Directors. Under Flood Control District, F1, amend lease agreement with Arizona Sports Complex LLC. Under F2, easement, right-of-way, and relocation assistance documents. The board will now consider items F1 and F2.
Move for approval? Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We will now adjourn as the Flood Control District Board of Directors and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. Item 71 is the public comment period. It looks like we do have some public comments. So thank you very much, Fran. We have, under public comment, we have five speaker slips. So would, I believe, Ms. Haley Hannigan, please step forward. What would you like? Sure. Ms. Bader? Come on up.
That's Lorena Bader, right? Thank you.
Good morning. Four Paws and Friends was founded by Laura Martini and myself to provide much-needed enrichment, support, and promotion for the animals at the West Shelter. Firing me while I was actually dedicating my time and energy to forming a 501(c)(3) to help MCACC has put them in an awkward position. However, you would hope that they would set aside their egos and pettiness and graciously accept our help and donations. Sadly, that is not the case. Every step of the way, they have attempted to prevent us from helping, grown adults sitting in meetings figuring out how to thwart our efforts. They are willing to sacrifice the mental and physical health of the animals in order to play their sick games. Here are just a few examples, most of which have backfired spectacularly, attempting to prevent us from providing and serving Christmas dinner for the dogs. Delaying our request for a public dog walk, then changing the rules two days prior. Deciding that only active volunteers can pass out enrichment items that Four Paws provides. Defaming us on their Facebook page, and actually lying to make it appear that we solicited funds under false pretenses. Laura Martini has repeatedly spoken to Sam Wessel and management regarding the roadblocks put up every step of the way. Our pleas fall on deaf ears. Logic, common sense, problem-solving, and an ability to communicate effectively are basically nonexistent with this management team. They are blinded by their need for retaliation. They are blinded by their need for retaliation. It must be obvious to you by now why donors, volunteers, and staff have fled MCACC and why their reputation is in tatters. This board and Maricopa County management must deal with the bullying and abuses that have been brought up time and time again. By not having consequences, the bullies are emboldened and continue their destructive practices. I will not stop speaking until injustices are rectified, those in charge are consecrated for their abuses, and staff, volunteers, and the animals are treated with the care and the respect they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us today. How about now, Ms. Hannigan?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brought some props today. This is a biscuit. It's a dog biscuit, and this is a pork chop. They're both dog treats, but in the eyes of the MCC volunteer coordinator Samantha Wassell, they could not be more different. In October, when our nonprofit Four Paws and Friends started providing enrichment to the shelter animals, we'd go in as members of the public and pass out different kinds of edible enrichment. As this activity has always been allowed for other nonprofits, we carried on like this for months. We did so with the approval of their on-staff enrichment coordinator. Things were going well from an enrichment standpoint into mid-January, when Ms. Wassell overreached and our efforts were interfered with. We received an email stating only approved and trained volunteers were qualified to pass treats through locked kennel doors and members of the public, i.e., fired volunteers, would not be able to do so. When confronted with logic and reminded that MCC literally keeps biscuits in their kennel buildings for the general public to gift to dogs, which seemingly would void her reason to exclude the fired volunteers, suddenly there was now a difference between biscuits and pork chops. Ms. Wassell insists distribution of these high-interest, high-value items can only be done by volunteers who are properly trained and coordinated to ensure the items are appropriately distributed, whatever that means. Keep in mind that only six months ago, Ms. Bader was not only a trained volunteer, but one of the most highly-trained volunteers, often entrusted by the director herself with tasks that even staff couldn't accomplish. And because of our efforts, Four Paws was nationally acknowledged by the company that owns Pork Chops. So do you think it's possible that Ms. Wassell is actually worried that a fired volunteer who is not well-versed in the art of passing out dog treats might accidentally dump all of the Pork Chops intended for one building into a single kennel? Or is it more likely that she's wasting county's time and resources in engaging in the pettiness and retaliation we have come to expect from MCC? Thank you.
Thank you for joining us today, Ms. Jordan Bader. Good morning.
MCC is supposed to be financially self-sustaining. Maricopa County provides little money to help MCC, so volunteers are vital in helping the organization run well. Volunteers are in the thick of the shelter. They see everything and know everything that's going on. Suzanne Faquah and Sam Wessel have taken over training in the volunteer program. Things have been difficult. The majority of volunteers are unhappy, and they're unable to retain new volunteers. Did you know that Suzanne Faquah was the director at Sedona Humane? Did you know that volunteers quit under her leadership and it ended up costing her the position? Why did they leave? Lack of communication, lack of respect for management and the board, lack of input, lack of what volunteers could say. Leadership was ineffectual at fixing problems. And when Suzanne left, that's when Mary reached out and brought her in. Volunteers are not respected at MCC. Their opinions are disregarded. They have no voice in decisions. They are shown no appreciation. Instead, they are in constant trouble for the most ridiculous things. Talking too loud around the dogs, walking too fast or running with a dog, carrying the wrong kind of bag, giving the wrong kind of treats, playing fetch with the dogs. This management team has no idea how to effectively communicate and inspire a group of people. I now go to the East Shelter one day a week, and the kennels are crap, but the environment is like night and day for me. You want to know why? Because management is never around micromanaging staff and volunteers. The volunteers work with the staff. They actually have a relationship there. They are not treated like children or felt like they are not wanted. You will never have a strong volunteer program at the West Shelter if it is not managed and supported like it should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bader. Now, Ms. Erica Edmard.
Two weeks ago, Four Paws and Friends received messages from three different shelter employees letting them know that the shelter had been out of wet dog food for days and that numerous requests to management had got unanswered. Four Paws put out a plea requesting donations to buy food for the West Shelter. They quickly raised over $1,000, bought 1,200 cans of food, and delivered it to the shelter before they opened. A few hours later, a post appeared on MCC's official Facebook page slandering Four Paws in the form of a PSA, telling people that there was a group lying about the shelter's inventory in order to solicit donations. It was later confirmed that this post was false, and there was no wet food at all, especially not in the abundance the post claimed. Instead of thanking Four Paws or simply choosing to not post anything, MCC implied to their 50,000 followers that a nonprofit set up specifically to provide for their dogs was lying to supporters and mishandling donations. After the initial shock at such a harmful post, I thought back to how our firing was handled. I wondered how the situation would have played out if, at that time, there had been a group of people no longer afraid of speaking out against injustice and incompetence as there is now. If people didn't stay silent out of fear of losing their volunteer privileges or jobs because they made a legitimate suggestion about how the shelter could operate better. How long would the dogs have needlessly suffered in the heat, panting all day long, some actually seizing and turning blue? Prior to that day, the employees who actually cared had no one to turn to when their concerns were ignored by management. I found purpose at this shelter, and I truly miss the dogs volunteering, but I'm happy to be one of the scapegoats sacrificed if it means that others have a place to reach out for help. I'm glad that our termination has emboldened others to speak up when they see something wrong. Honestly, I'm surprised to still be here, burning eight hours of vacation every month to stand at this podium for two minutes every two weeks, but as long as county continues to give us things to speak about, we will come back. Between the old and new issues and others finding their voice, I imagine we will be here for a while. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a printout of the post that was slandering us for you guys to review. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming today. And last, what I have here is a speaker slip, Ms. Kathleen Bow. Good morning.
I would like to report a failing volunteer program with some numbers. To properly staff our volunteers for the number of animals to be as successful as PAC in Tucson, we need 138,000 hours for the approximate 29,000 animals who come through our shelter a year. Last year, we had 36,000 hours for approximately 1.2 hours per animal for the year. PAC in Tucson had 89,000 hours for 18,000 animals for five hours per animal, and the Humane Society had 408,000 for 17,000 animals for 24 hours per animal. We're about 100,000 hours short that are available from a community of animal-loving people who would love to volunteer. By not taking advantage of this resource and using $15 an hour as the base, we're throwing approximately $1.5 million out the window. The two people running the volunteer and training programs at our shelter are rude, condescending, ineffective, and lacking in the ability to interact with people. New volunteers should not be required to spend 16 hours cleaning kennels or doing laundry unless that's what they signed up to do. Interviewing old and new volunteers would get a picture if you did it. A recent new volunteer, who had six years of experience handling difficult dogs at MASH and prior six years of fostering and shelter work, reported that Ms. Wessel refused to accept that experience to fast-track her to work with our little dogs. She's not surprised that many volunteers just don't show up again. We can do better. Let's do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that was the last of the speakers. Thanks, everybody, for joining us today. We're now on item number 72, which is the supervisor's summary of current events. First off, Joy, is there anything you'd like to talk about? Great. Steve, make your jump.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just make it real briefly, and hate to rehash, but just going back to, I think it was A3, the actual elections case. I do appreciate the comments that have been made. It's one of those issues that I thought about for a very long time, and I get it. I mean, I agree that there's some potential problems, particularly around 2020 primary election and the general election. And so I do understand, and I definitely get it, but I do want to appreciate the comments. Other than that, I just wanted to, once again, thank Scott and Ray and the entire elections team for the work they've done in getting us prepared for the primary and general election. I'm going out to another LD meeting later on this evening to kind of finalize, and this is where we're at. So I think people on my side of the aisle are excited for March 17, and I think, I really do feel that we are prepared to rock and roll. I think it's going to be a good day for Maricopa County. I know for a fact it's going to be a good day for Maricopa County, and we'll just have to see who comes out on that particular election. But, you know, I think people are very excited on my side, and I just wanted to thank, once again, all the work that's been done to get us prepared, not only for the presidential preference election, but for 2020 primary and general as well.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Jack?
Thank you. Just a couple of items real quickly. I did tour the Anthem test bed, where we are doing a lot of work on looking at ways to improve safety and traffic flow using intelligent transportation technology. Really impressive efforts on the part of Maricopa County, and anyone who has an opportunity to look at what we're doing in Anthem should do that. I also attended my first meeting as a member of the RPTA Board, the Valley Metro Group, and I'm always anxious to do anything that is involved in transportation. I attended the Intel... I'm a member of the Intel Community Advisory Panel, and we had an update from Intel on their presence in Arizona because they're celebrating 40 years here now. They have invested over $40 billion in our region, employ around 12,000 people here now with an average salary of $155,000. So huge impact on our region, and very, very happy to have them in the area. Last night, I attended the Queen Creek State of the Town. Always excited to see what's going on in my district, and lots of good things happening. So thank you.
Great. Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks to Supervisor Sellers for coming up to District Three, checking out the Anthem test bed. That's a great project. Thanks to McDot for their work out there, and I would have joined you, except I was out at the legislature speaking on the expenditure limitation issue at the same time, but thanks for coming up. And I was in Anthem on two separate occasions yesterday. First thing in the morning, went out and spoke to the Anthem Leadership Group. These are some young professionals who are looking at getting more involved in the community up there. Great opportunity to talk to them about all that's going on in Maricopa County. And then I was up there last night for a fun occasion, bittersweet though. It was the retirement of the chief of the Daisy Mountain Fire District. Mark Nichols is retiring, so we're sorry to see him go, but they had a great cake and everything. And Daisy Mountain's going to be in good hands because Brian Tobin is going to be the new fire chief. And I knew Brian from my time over at Phoenix. He was with Phoenix Fire for 37 years and also is the brother of the head of the Arizona Department of Administration, Andy Tobin, along with some other things on his resume. So great day out there in Anthem. And then the last thing I wanted to, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I see Bill Wiley in the back of the room, and I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Bill Wiley. Likely, his time serving as the acting administrator of the assessor's office is coming to an end, but Bill, I just can't thank you enough. I had the utmost respect for you before all this, between your work here at the county and then also your service over at the City of Phoenix, but the way that you came in in a very difficult time and gave great leadership and direction to the individuals in the assessor's office and our great employees down there, I just can't thank you enough for it. And to me, this was the ultimate in public service, and thank you, Bill, for your service.
Awesome. Steve said he didn't have anything?
I agree with my distinguished colleague from District Three about why. He got all excited this morning when he saw this on the agenda. I think he needed to hold the hook. We just can't let you leave, Bill. Thank you.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank you, Bill. You stepped on my line about Bill Wiley, too. I just wanted to... I think it's important that people out there... This has, you know, been a little bit of a troubled time. It's made the newspapers, and I would like to thank my colleagues on the diligent approach that we have been using to really look hard at the candidates that put their names forward. I'd like to thank all of them for putting their names forward. Some of them came in and interviewed with us this week, and my immortal words about sleeping on it is coming true to make sure we do the best thing. But you truly have provided a great service to not only the county taxpayer, but also this board to be there, and we can feel good that good things are continuing to happen with a very great assessor's department and all the people that work there. So thanks for being there. I've also routinely have heard nice things about what we're doing with elections as I'm in the district. That seems to have been making the papers lately, and I think people are giving us kudos on how this is being handled, and I appreciate that. And I'd just like to ask Joy and Fields to talk about the 13... Sometime, at some point, talk about that 13K program. I've made an outreach to, you know, as a chairman representing this board about asking people to help us with those Election Day posts, and it's really coming to fruition. The training has started. I thank all the county employees, but all the volunteers outside that are helping us with this election coming up, being trained, hopefully, to also participate in the primary and the general. But everybody that has signed up, I think it's over 360 or something right now, please reach back out to them for all of our board and thank them for stepping up and taking some time upcoming to be trained into that. It's important to this board, and it's important to the voter. So thank you for that, and if you could, make sure that happens. But that's all I have to say. So again, thank you all for being here, and we are adjourned.